Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare Hare Gauri Premanandhir Thank you all very, very much.
Hare Krishna Hare Krsna, dear devotees. So, thank you for joining us in this afternoon session to hear from Zolayas Vithichalum Maraj and also if you would like to share anything, we can also share. So, why I thought about this session is because of this unexpected calamity which has fallen on devotees all over the world. It is a time we should try to get the essence and not get stuck at the level of circumstances which are surrounding us. So, it is very important to understand the essence, what is required to be done and not get, like I said, into that ourselves get caught in the circumstances. We do what is required in these circumstances. But if we want to have a connection with our spiritual master, any spiritual master, whether you know, then it is very important to understand few basic fundamental points. And if we can understand them, so then we will see that it will be easier for us to build a far more solid connection with the lotus feet of our spiritual master. Because this whole journey in a godly fashion is about attachment to the spiritual master. Rather, I should not say attachment, I should say attachment to the instructions of the spiritual master. I think it was Jananavast Prabhu when he spoke here, the lecture, then he said that one's spiritual master's instructions are worshipable. So, if we want to, that is why 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 we want to, because it is good for us to say many times, to put out so, how we should love this service. We don't show love through sentiments. In the beginning stage, it is okay to show love through sentiments. I love you, I can't stay in there. But at the end of the day, it is that love has to culminate in show, in service. Without that, there is not, the connections are thin. Because it is based upon sentiments. Sentiments are based upon mind and the mind can anyway go here and there. Today it is accepting something, tomorrow it rejects. So, we are very momentary platform. So, I thought what we will do is that we will see how the session goes. So, we are going to hear a lecture from Zolayas Vithichalum Maraj. This is one of his last lectures he gave in New Jersey. And very amazing lecture. And I can say with conviction, if we, 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 so that this lecture itself can take us to the end of our life. I am not saying sentiments, because when I heard the lecture before, I should know of you, how if we listen to the lecture properly and focus on it, and do it, then you can go back to God after this. So, we now hear this lecture from Zolayas Vithichalum Maraj, which he gave after arriving in USA in New Jersey. Prabhu, can you play the lecture?
Maharaja, you are on the main screen.
Okay, okay.
I think in your computer, you probably have me as.
Yeah, right, I have you on my main screen.
Yeah.
So.
The computer can change it.
Yeah, we have done that.
Okay.
So, we have, since I think 10 weeks, you are not having Sunday feast in the temple. And anyway, I mean, with the mercy of Zoom, we are able to get to see each other and get to communicate. So, at a time like this, naturally, it creates a lot of anxiety, a lot of distress. But at the same time, this situation is also helping us. It's also helping us because the other day in Ujain, one person came to see me and he was telling me that he felt that this was the best time. These 70 days were the best time in his life. Because during this time, he was constantly with the family, which never happened before. And this value of being together with the family, with the intimacy is very much needed. And the other thing is that the devotees, of course, take it in a Krishna-conscious way. As devotees, we try to take advantage of every situation. And the way to take advantage of the situation, every situation is, in every situation, whether it is distressful or joyful, we should always remember Krishna. At the time of distress and difficulties, we should consider that this is my, this is happening due to my own karmic reactions. And when good things happen, we should consider that it is due to Krishna's mercy. This is how we actually need to see Krishna under every situation. Krishna consciousness means to always remember Krishna and never forget him. Just one little mistake, that for a moment, we forgot Krishna, we turned our face away from Krishna and as a result of that, we fell into this material nature. And in this material nature, we are subjected to a situation where we are ripping the harvest of our own actions. Prakritikriyamanani, gunai karmaani, sarvasha. In this material nature, everything is happening due to guna and karma. Material nature has three modes of gunas and we have our karma. The action-reaction principle. And that's what is happening to us. We cannot blame anybody for what happens to us. And we fail in this trap of Maya's Krishna's illusory energy. This illusory energy first of all made us forget about our actual identity and covered us over with a false identity or false ego, ahankar. This false ego is the material element. It's also a material element, a very subtle. It actually covers our original identity and creates a mistaken identity, false identity. Like our original identity is that we all are servants of Krishna. But Maya, due to illusory energy of the Lord, forgetting that we are servants of Krishna, we are trying to become the Lord and Master of this material nature. And it has been pointed out that it's natural. Natural in the sense, this material nature is Krishna's external energy. And we are from Krishna's internal energy. So, the moment we look away from Krishna, we just see Krishna's external energy, Maya. And Maya is inferior, apara yam itastanana. But prakritin vidhi me param, jibabhutan mahabahu jajedandhar jate jagat. The jibabhutan, the living entities are coming from Krishna's internal potential, superior para prakriti, superior energy. So, since we are from Krishna's superior energy, as soon as we come across Krishna's inferior energy, although we are very minute and this external energy is extremely powerful. Dhyavi hesha gunamuni momo maya durattaya. Durattaya is insurmountable. It's impossible to become free from this. Durattaya is insurmountable, it's impossible to become free from this influence of Maya. But we develop this tendency to lord over. That's why we, in this material nature, it's, it's natural that we are trying to exploit this material nature for our sense gratification. We think that this internal nature is for us individually, for us to dominate. And that's what Nikotastumaya tare Japotiya thari. Japotiya thari means very tightly embraces him. And that is how it all begins. We've, the moment we look away from Krishna, we forget that our business is to become a servant of Krishna, but we try to lord over. And that gives us the first covering of false ego. Then comes the second covering of intelligence and we plan how we are going to enjoy this material nature. That is the purpose of intelligence. And then through mind, this consciousness is constantly flowing towards the material direction. So, this is how with these three subtle elements, false ego, intelligence and mind, we get trapped into this material nature by getting, getting a body made up of this subtle element, subtle body. And then according to the shape of a subtle body, Maya gives us material nature, mother nature, gives us a gross body made of five gross element. Earth, water, fire, air and ether. And this is how we become imprisoned with these two bodies, gross body and subtle body. Sometimes the question comes up, how do I know that I have a subtle body? What is the shape and form of the subtle body? My answer to that is when you fall asleep and you dream. At that time, your gross body is unconscious. But when you are dreaming, are you there? And do you have a body? You are seeing that a tiger is about to pounce on you and eat you. Now, in what plane it is happening? There's the subtle body. In our dream, we experience the subtle body. And when you are awake, then both the gross and subtle bodies are conscious. In Uddhav Gita, Krishna explained it very nicely and Krishna pointed out that how just as a dream is, when we are dreaming, we consider the dream to be real. Similarly, this material nature, our condition in this material nature is also like a dream. The only difference is when we dream, it is individually experienced. When I dream, only I can experience the dream. The person sitting next to me will not be able to experience that dream. But this dream is a collective dream, but it's a dream. But this dream has been arranged by Krishna through this, through the guna and karma. Material nature has three modes and we act, we act in those three modes or in the mixed mode. And as a result of that, we get the results. Urdhan gachchanti shaktastha, the activities in the mode of goodness makes us elevate to the higher situations, urdhangachchanti. Mudhitishkati rajasha. The mode of passion makes us remain in the middle, that is in the earth planet, in the bhoomandal, bhooloka, this management system. And jagannagunobrittishta, adho gachchanti tamasa. Being influenced by very disgusting mode of ignorance, one slides down to the, slides down to the lower state of existence. Either in the lower planetary systems or in the lower species of life, animals, birds, reptiles, insects, trees, plants. So, this is how everything is happening in this material nature by Krishna's divine arrangements. Krishna made the arrangement. Again, sometimes the question arises, why did Krishna do that? Krishna did that because we wanted it. Krishna never said that you go there. Krishna said, okay, fine. He tried to persuade us, don't go, don't go. But we insisted. In that respect, Shilpa Prabhupada gave an example. One day, his little son was crying and his mother was trying to make him understand. He was crying because he wanted to touch the moving table fan. And mother said, no, don't do that. But he kept on insisting, no, I want to touch it, I want to touch it. Then when Prabhupada got to know that, Prabhupada said, okay. So, he switched off the fan. And when the speed came down, Prabhupada said, touch it. He touched it and he got hurt and he started to cry. Prabhupada said, what happened? Touch it again. He said, no, 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 I don't want to touch it, I don't want to touch it. So, our situation is somewhat like this. We said, we want to go there, we want to go there. Krishna said, fine. And he made arrangement. Fine, go there, try to enjoy, see how wonderfully you enjoy there without me. And then you get hurt and then finally we say, no, 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 I don't want to, I don't want to remain here, I don't want to suffer here. When the illusory energy is so strong, we on our own cannot possibly understand the effect of the illusory energy. Therefore, we need someone to tell us. So, in that respect also Prabhupada mentioned, our condition is somewhat like a traveler who lost his way in the desert. And desert is very hot, there is no water and he is dying of thirst. And from time to time, he sees a mirage and he thinks that there is some water. No matter how much he runs after the mirage, he will never be able to quench his thirst. And that's what we are doing, life after life, we are running after a mirage with an expectation to get some, to quench our thirst for enjoyment. And finally, there comes somebody, somebody comes and tells us, the water, this is, that's a mirage, there is no water, it's hot sand. You'll never be able to quench your thirst there. It's just an illusory impression of water, it makes you feel that there is water, but there is no water. Real water is there. And that is the merciful Vaishnava. He gives us the message of the spiritual world where there is real water and we can quench your thirst to the heart content. And that's what Prabhupada actually told me also. Once Prabhupada told me that for so many lifetime, we have been trying to enjoy and you can see that we are still not satisfied. Just offer this life to Krishna and see what happens. And then he explained what this material nature is like. He very elaborately explained this material nature, the illusory aspect of this material nature. And he explained how sex desire is the shackles with which everyone is tied down to the material nature. Therefore, this material nature is called maithana garo, a prison house where everyone is tied down with sex desire. And that's why to make spiritual progress, one has to overcome sex desire. Prabhupada very clearly mentioned for householders also, it is for the sake of procreation, not to indulge in that enjoyment that it provides. So, that is the real knowledge. And in Uddhav Gita also Krishna meant that point very closely. So, these are the real wisdom that Krishna is giving us, Vedic literatures are giving us and paving our way back to the spiritual world. This is not, this is not a place for enjoyment. This is a place for suffering, so when suffering comes, we should not become perturbed. We should rather recognize that this is the real nature of this material nature. This is the natural state of this material nature. We are here to suffer. And Vedas are giving very, very clear informations about that, how this material nature is a place of suffering and how this body is an instrument for receiving pain. We are in a world of suffering with a body which is meant to receive pain. So, what can we expect here through this body? Therefore, when suffering comes, don't become perturbed. Like rather depend upon Krishna, make the arrangements to become Krishna conscious. Krishna conscious means, the word itself is indicating what it means. Krishna conscious, we have consciousness, the soul is conscious. And the consciousness is the sign of existence. We are because we are conscious. When you are not conscious, we are not, we don't know whether we are or whether we are not. Now, this consciousness can be either projected towards the material nature, as I mentioned earlier, the moment you project your consciousness towards the material direction, then our suffering condition begins. On the other hand, when you project our consciousness towards Krishna, then the life of joy, life of real enjoyment begins. That is where the real enjoyment is. Krishna is anandamai. Krishna is full of joy, therefore just by being connected to Krishna, we can enjoy, that is the real enjoyment. Like from the generator, from the powerhouse, electricity is flowing. When you touch the electricity, what do we get? We get the electric current. So, similarly, when we touch or become connected to the source of all joy, then what do we get? We get real joy, anandam, bhutiparthanam, pratipadam, puranam, vitaswadan. Not only we experience joy, but we become submerged in an ocean of joy. And that ocean of joy keeps on increasing, we begin to, our enjoyment continues to grow. Varthanam, varthanam means increase, grow. And pratipadam, at every step, puranam, vitaswadanam, at every step, we experience total bliss. So, that is what Krishna consciousness is. Now, again to go back to Uddhav Gita, Krishna actually makes a very nice point. He is saying that this material nature is a place of suffering. Three modes are simply causing suffering, especially mode of passion and ignorance. Passion makes us active to enjoy and ignorance causes total loss of consciousness. Like, that is what happens due to the influence of the passion and ignorance. Passion and ignorance cycle in this way. In the morning, we wake up and we begin to become active. And throughout the day, we work so hard. And then at night, we fall asleep in ignorance. In passion, we, we become active and those activities and passion are simply motivated by trying to enjoy this material nature and then we slide down to ignorance at night. Then in the morning, we wake up and again we become active in the mode of passion. Throughout the day, we work and then at night, we fall asleep in ignorance. But mode of goodness takes us out of the cycle of passion and ignorance. Goodness actually makes us realize what real knowledge is, goodness gives us knowledge. And we, we begin to see the real nature of this material nature. And then we transcend the mode of goodness. But that it will be possible only when we come across a Vaishnava devotee, only when you come across a bona fide spiritual master. Jay Krishna tattvabetta, she guru hai. The one who knows Krishna and he provides us with all the information about Krishna, provides us all the information about that reality, provides us with all the information about our real identity. And then our good fortune begins. So, mode of goodness and the material nature is not the solution. The real solution is to get out of the material nature and that will happen only when we receive the mercy of a bona fide spiritual master. Jay Krishna tattvabetta, she guru hai. Rupa Goswami, in his teaching, I am sorry, Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, in his teachings to Rupa Goswami, is explaining that situation. Brahman dha brhmita, kono bhagbo banji, guru Krishna prashadepaye, bhakti lata pich. While traveling in this material nature, brahman dha brhmita, in this material universe, brahman, kono bhagbo banji, some fortunate soul by the mercy. by the mercy of Guru and Krishna. Guru Krishna Prashade Pae Bhaktilata Beach receives the seed of devotional creeper. So when he gets that seed, he naturally have to take advantage of the seed. How does he take advantage? By planting the seed in the soil of the heart, the field of the heart. So that is where we plant the seed of Bhaktilata. Now we have to see that the field is properly prepared. If the field is not fertile, if the field is rocky, the field is devoid of water, the seed will not fractify. Therefore, we have to prepare the field of the heart. You have to, fertile field means soft heart. Heart becomes softened with faith. Shraddha. Shraddha Shabde Vischash Kahi, Shudriya Nishchaye Krishna Bhakti Koile Shalbokolmukritaha. Shraddha or faith emphatically points out that if you serve Krishna, then everything will be done. Krishna Bhakti Koile Shalbokolmukritaha. Now that is an important thing. We have to have the faith. And if we have the faith, then the soil, the field of our heart will become prepared. And then when you plant the seed of Bhaktilata, it'll sprout. And when the seed of Bhaktilata sprouts, two leaves come out at first. Those two leaves are Klesagni and Shubhadan. Secession of all suffering condition. Yes, that's what devotional service does. When Bhaktilata becomes fractified, becomes a sibling, the sibling has two leaves. One of the leaf is, one of the leaves is Klesagni. Klesa means suffering, Gna means destroying. All the suffering conditions are destroyed. And Shubhadan, Shubha means auspiciousness and Da means gives. It gives all auspiciousness to our life. And now the devotional creeper has to be watered. Just planting the seed is not enough. It has to be watered. What is watering of this seed? Shavanam and Kiratanam. Hearing about Krishna's glory, hearing about Krishna's pastimes, hearing about Krishna's instructions, shavanam, and speaking about Krishna's glory, Krishna's pastimes, Krishna's teachings. Now there is another problem here. Like when the field is fertile and Bhaktilata is about to grow, then there is a possibility that the weeds will stifle the growth, stifle the Bhaktilata. Now in this respect also, there is one example is given about paddy, rice paddy. Those who know about how to cultivate rice, we may have seen that the rice fields are covered completely with water. Now when the field is covered with water, then the paddy grows out of water. And all the weeds. So that is the thing, we have to cover the field with hearing and chanting. Constant hearing and chanting. Then the weeds will not be able to grow, but the Bhaktilata will begin to grow. And as the Bhaktilata grows, it penetrates through the seven coverings of the material nature. Actually eight covering, the eighth covering is the covering of Maya. And then beyond that is Brahmajyoti, which is also compared to causal ocean or Virajariva. Viraja Brahmalophedhi. Penetrating even Virajariva. The causal ocean, Brahmajyoti, it comes to Boykuntha. And it grows even beyond Boykuntha and comes to Golok. And in Golok, it gives the shelter of Krishna's lotus feet. To hold on to, then it becomes steady. So Bhaktilata will grow and grow all the way to Golok, Brindavan. And there, taking the shelter of Krishna. The Bhaktilata will start to flower and fruit. And that flower love our love for Krishna. Mahaprabhu has been given following Sri Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, Shilpa Prabhupada. And we got it. And it's spreading all over the world. People are getting an opportunity to make their lives successful. And how the life becomes successful, when the consciousness becomes fixed at Krishna's lotus feet, then you wake up from this dream. This material nature is a dream state. Dream state. Like we spoke about individual dream at night, when sleep, we dream. And but this material experience of this material nature is also a dream. This dream is created by Krishna's illusory energy. And in this dream, we are trying to enjoy. In this dream, sometimes we are happy, sometimes we are sad. Sometimes we are excited, sometimes we are depressed. So this is happening, Prokritikriya Mananin Gunui Karma Nishavasha. All these are happening due to our past karma and the modes of material nature. This individual dream, we experience singularly, individually. But this is a collective dream. Whoever is here is in this dream. Collective dream. And this dream is real. This dream is real because it is arranged by Krishna. Because it's Krishna's illusory energy, therefore it is real. Anything that comes from Krishna is real. Om Puranamada, Puranavidam, Puranath, Puranambodhichit. Because it's coming from Krishna, it is perfect and complete. And it is real. But that also has been explained, how it is real. It is not real as real reality. It is real as a reflected reality. Like on a pool of water, there is a reflection of a tree. And the reflection is there of the tree. But if we're hungry and if we try to pick the fruit from the tree, we won't be able to and quench or satisfy our hunger. Because it gives the impression, but it does, it's not there. But because the reflection of the tree is there, therefore in reality, the substance is also there, the real tree is there. Because in the real tree, there are fruits, there are flowers, there are leaves. That's why we are seeing the reflection, in the reflection, the fruits and flowers and trees and leaves. And in that tree, there are real fruits. If you're hungry, we can pick the fruits from there and eat. If we want, we can pick the flowers and offer them to Krishna. So that is what the spiritual reality is. And Krishna is instructing Uddhav that when we become situated in the spiritual reality, then these dreams disappear. Just as when you wake up from a dream, the dream becomes totally insignificant, unimportant. Similarly, when you wake up in the spiritual reality, there's all these material experiences appear to be totally insignificant. And because we are dreaming, they appear to be so important. Yes, I want to have a lot of money. I want to have a beautiful house. I want to have a very loving and caring family. I want to have a lot of success in my life. But when we wake up in the spiritual reality, all of these things become totally insignificant. And that is where we need to wake up. And there is a way to wake up, like Bhaktibhinata Kuru is saying. Jeev Jagu, Jeev Jagu, Gorachandu Gode. Gorachand, Sri Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is telling. Oh, sleeping souls, oh, sleeping souls, wake up, wake up. Gorachand. Kotonidra Jao Maya Pishachi Rakhode. For how long you are going to sleep on the lap of Maya? Who is a pisachi? Who is a witch who sucks your blood? Yes, that's what Maya is doing, making us work so hard and turning our blood into water. That is what Maya is doing, make us work so hard. But he's saying, for how long you are going to sleep on the lap of Maya? So just follow the instruction of Sri Chaitanya Mahaprabhu. Eneshio Shodhi Maya Nashivaralaji. Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is saying, I brought the medicine to destroy Maya. This medicine is going to free you from the illusory influence of Maya. Harinam Mahamantra Lahutumi Maya. Please come and take this Harinam Mahamantra, Hare Krishna Mahamantra. And your life will become successful. Sri Chaitanya Mahaprabhu has given us the most perfect process. We are so fortunate. Actually, that's why Uddhav Gita is so important. You know, very systematically, Uddhav Gita through twenty-two chapters are giving us the perfect knowledge. Perfect knowledge. It's giving us the understanding of what this material nature is like and how to become free from the illusory influence of the material nature. And also incidentally, I selected to discuss about Uddhav Gita because at that time, Uddhav was facing a very critical situation. Just as Arjun was also feeling a very critical situation. He has to face this war where he'll have to kill his relatives whom he loved so much. Bishma, Drona. But Krishna forced him. Similarly, Uddhav was facing a situation when Krishna is going to withdraw his pastimes. Already the jadus have been cursed by the Brahmanas, the sages, very exalted sages. Like Vishamitra, Durvasha, Naras, Bhasishtra, others, Vishamitra. He cursed the jadus, jadus pranked with them. The jadu boys, they dressed out Samba as a pregnant woman. And jokingly, they took him to the sages. The sages are known for knowing everything. They know Trikala Darshi, they know the three aspects of time, past, present and future. And they asked, can you please tell us whether this lady is going to give birth to a boy or a girl? And the sages said, he'll give birth to an iron club. And that is going to be the cause of the destruction of your whole family. So they have already been cursed in this way. They knew that the family, you know, the words of these sages are not going to go in vain. So jadu family is going to be destroyed. And of course, it was Krishna's arrangement. Krishna brought them to assist him in his pastimes. And now that he is going to withdraw his pastimes, he is sending them back. And Krishna told Uddhav that in seven days, Dwarka is going to be submerged in the ocean. So just imagine, the city where you live for so many years is just going to disappear in the ocean. Krishna told all the jadus, let's all go to Prabharsa Tirtha. And they knew soon they are going to, all going to be perished. Meaning they are going to go back to the spiritual world. And Krishna told Uddhav. And Uddhav actually asked Krishna that please let me also go with you. I know that you are going to withdraw your pastimes. But Krishna wanted Uddhav to stay on because there's some more work to be done. So he wanted Uddhav to stay on and become totally detached, become a sannasi and travel, go to Badri Kashram. In Badri Kashram, Krishna didn't go and the sages there had been waiting to have his darshan. So he sent Uddhav to instruct them. And in that situation, Krishna told Uddhav Gita. And also you can see the Uddhav Gita is so important. Prabhupada said Bhagavad Gita is a preliminary study. Shriman Bhagavatam is the advanced course. And the most important part of Shriman Bhagavatam is tenth canto, where Krishna's pastimes are described. And then in eleventh canto, the wisdom of the spiritual reality. So systematically, he actually explained. So that's why I selected Uddhav Gita at a time like this to discuss. And I'm sure many of you are participating in that class. And Uddhav Gita, I'm just giving an overview of Uddhav Gita. But you all have to probe into it, study carefully. And you will see what a, what a And you will see what a, what a storehouse of wisdom this twenty-two chapters have. So please take advantage of this time that is forcing you to go deep within yourself. Now you are forced not to go out, therefore you have to go in. Study them and you'll see achieving perfection is so easy. Krishna made it so easy to achieve perfection. Especially when we got the human form of life. Especially when we have the opportunity to be born in the age of Kali. Especially when we are born at a time when Chaitanya Mahapravu came and Prabhupada came and distributed Krishna consciousness all over the world. So you're getting such a wonderful opportunity to make the human form of life successful. Thank you all very much. All glories to Shilpa Prabhupada. Gauri Premanandhi Hari Hari. Does anybody have any question?
Rani Ramon, Spas. Hare Krishna, devotees. I enjoy it too. It is like Ananda Muthik Partha. So, and one more thing Maharaj was telling. Like we are in illusion. But to understand that we are in illusion, we need someone. So Maharaj also always wonderfully, who it is very gentle and well natured, made us understand that we are in illusion and what this material nature and spiritual nature is. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, God. Yes, all points. Whatever he spoke results, like in a charia, himself also practice. Thank you. Okay, next we have Ashamantaji, Ashok Prabhu.
Hare Krishna Prabhuji, Dhankulam. Actually, a couple of points. Actually, Guru Maharaj also said about three modes of material nature and how they bind us and how we should try to come to the mode of goodness because that gives us knowledge and we can see the real nature of this material world. That is one thing. And another point, Guru Maharaj said importance of vashnav. How our life can change by just coming or getting the blessings of a vashnav? So that I can see in my life also when, when I was not in Krishna consciousness, how Lalit Prabhu, my love, came to meet me and just he continued to give me his association to me and then slowly, slowly I came to this Krishna consciousness. So I can feel how it is important, the blessing or association of a vashnav. And probably one more point, Guru Maharaj also said in his bhajan, jeev jago, we should follow the instruction of Chaitanya Mahapravu. Meaning chant Hare Krishna Mantra and make your life successful. So that is also one thing, chanting is very important and I should do it more seriously or more carefully so that I can get some taste and make my life also successful. Thank you, Prabhuji. Hare Krishna.
Thank you, Ashok Prabhu. I think you find the process, you have to keep. The effect of association of human being in life, we can see. We will see that whatever comes in our life, it is the mercy of God. Okay, we have Vitale Mahatji.
Hare Krishna Prabhuji. Prabhuji, actually when I heard the news yesterday, I was so shocked like that the one person whom we rely, the person we trust so much. Like, one who is so close to Krishna when he died, how the things are. But now in this lecture, I heard one thing that it is all a dream, illusion, which has to break one or the other day. This was the thing that touched me so much. Like yesterday, it was not like some, he died. It is just he woke up from the dream and now the illusion broke. And that's the thing which really touched me. And second thing Guru Maharaj said that this passion and ignorance, this dream is full of passion and ignorance. But goodness is something which takes us to the reality. Yes. Hare Krishna.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, because you have to know, as you have said. Actually, no one drives. Normal person also doesn't drive. And what is happening? The soul is changing the dress. Or so if this happens, the normal person, we can think that if God has a good deed or if Shilpa Prabhupada has associated, they are not going through these changes. They are just here for some service and then they go into service somewhere else. Thank you so much. Next we have Amit Shambhava Prabhu. Amit Prabhu.
Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna.
Am I audible to you?
Yes.
There are so many learnings and most other devotees have covered. There is one similarity which I observed between Krishna's pastime and Guru Maharaj. That when Krishna had to withdraw his pastimes, he gave the knowledge of Uddhav Gita, this knowledge to Uddhav. And Guru Maharaj gave the same knowledge to all of us before withdrawing his pastimes from this world. Maybe he is giving too much stress on Uddhav Gita for last two months. And even in last class, he gave, he compiled the whole Uddhav Gita. So this came in my mind.
Okay. Thank you, Prabhu. Yes, Saurabhupu.
Hare Krishna Prabhuji. Thank you very much, Prabhuji, for arranging this session. It felt as if, I mean, collectively, we were hearing Maharaj's class and it felt as if Maharaj is there and we are hearing Maharaj. So first point is, Prabhuji, that it is, it is natural for us to look away and when we look away, we see Krishna's external energy which is very powerful. And another thing is, the purpose of intelligence is how to enjoy material nature. So Maharaj told that this is the purpose of intelligence. And another point is, we are trying to enjoy in this world from so many lifetimes, we just offer this life to Krishna. And another is about the Paddy example. So we have to cover the Bhakti Lata with Shravanam and Kirtanam. And so about the dream, so when we wake up from dream, dream becomes so insignificant. Similarly, when we wake up in spiritual reality, this material sufferings, experiences becomes insignificant. And achieving perfection is so easy at the very end when Maharaj told. Thank you, Prabhuji.
Thank you, Saurabhupu. I was listening to the lecture, I didn't feel like it. Maharaj is there, and I'm zooming up, past there, so right. Yes, also I'm gonna offer this life. Prabhupada also said, Guru Maharaj, and this, he just offered, this is each one, this is true for each one of us. Offered, he said just offer this life to Krishna and then see what happens. So, soon life can you have. It's not that we have to live with God's mercy or God's mercy. But we should have the desire. From the desire will come the desire. One should have the desire. Thank you, Saurabhupu. Yes, next we have Arzu Mahaji.
Hare Krishna Prabhuji. Prabhuji, I would like to say Maharaj has very simple language within like forty-five minutes, the whole process, the whole science explained that what is exactly the problem, why are we here? And its solution is that how we should have Shravanam, Kirtanam or hearing, chanting, vashnav's with association, we should always keep Krishna in our heart, is the solution. And its result is that you can go back to Godhead. He is giving us a lot of hope and he is giving us, he is giving us a lot of hope that nothing has changed yet. You can still go back to Godhead. And it means every point, he says, let's see, we have mercy of Chaitanya Mahapravu. We have our spiritual masters to look up to. If we follow their bona fide spiritual masters' instructions, if we follow them properly, I mean, in such simplistic way, they showed us a thing that if we follow them actually, then we will not be bewildered, our mind. If we follow spiritual master's instructions, hearing, chanting, always try to remember Krishna and all your activities. Also respecting the vashnav's and try not to make offenses. So in short, he has given us a full summary, I mean, he only taught us all the teachings in forty-five minutes, how Gita has contributed. And how we have, we still have a lot of hope. It means we are in this age of Kali, but still Chaitanya Mahapravu's mercy we should be, in a way, we should be, we should not lose hope. It's okay, we are as well in this situation, but Chaitanya Mahapravu's mercy is there. And if we follow it simply, we can still go back to our, to Godhead. Very simply, Maharaj has given us a very good teaching, Prabhuji.
Thank you, Bhattacharya. Here, Maharaj was talking about Bhujan Duni Class. And it was at the sixth canto, then Bhujan Duni was very well explained. And after that, Maharaj said, this is a, a god's recognition that whatever difficult subject is, it is easy to understand. Some of the devotees use difficult subject terms, big terms. So that means they have them, so they understand. And if you understand, he is very able to explain very simple language. And you can also see that whatever you refer, you can see, you can follow. There is no complication, we don't have to scratch our heads, it's understood. Yeah, we can do it ourselves, but it's not difficult, because he has given it. You know, in such simple language, because he understood the essence. Thank you, Bhattacharya. Okay, we have not, Yojesh, Shambhava Prabhu.
Hare Krishna Prabhu. Hare Krishna. So usually, whatever Guru Maharaj said, he was listening to it all. And they showed us for such a short time, that if you do it like that, you can get God's love, Krishna can get it. But I want to say something, they said a very good thing. Chaitanya Mahapravu said to Swamiji, he said that the spirit of the Lord is Hare Krishna Mahamantra, Kirtanam, Javam, and Smaranam. That's all, so that's what happened in the heart.
Hare Krishna, thank you, Yojesh. If you want to say anything, sorry.
Yeah, I wanted to say that the name of God, Smaranam, Javam, and Kirtanam, that's all, they showed us the spirit, so now we have to take it. We have to do it and follow our right mark.
It's on our side, because it's our independent will. Okay. On your way, sport, so many points. You want me to read them?
As you feel.
You can speak.
Like Maharaj shared that everything is happening by Krishna's divine arrangement. So, we sometimes are not able to see Krishna's plans but trust to be assured that it is his plans which are working and his plans which are taking the precedence. And like other devotees also mentioned that like after life, we are running after illusion. But it is a bona fide guru or spiritual master who comes and takes us out and who tells us that this, this, this is a mirage, this is an illusion and the real water is somewhere else. And he also mentioned that always be dependent upon Krishna, be Krishna conscious. That is what he, like he mentioned about the meaning of the name Krishna Consciousness. Krishna Consciousness means always remember about Krishna, that it is, it is more about consciousness. And like other devotees also mentioned that Guru Krishna, Prapapaya Bhakti Lata Beach, by the mercy of a guru that we get the Bhakti Lata Beach and we have to protect it and nurture it and keep watering it by constant Shravanam and Kirtanam. And it is the most precious gift that we have got from Guru and we should protect it. And like you also mentioned that a simple moment of a slip away, we turn away and then we fall here. And but being Krishna conscious and it will help us to remember him and serve him and again go back. And Arzu Mahatji also shared. And one last point which I wanted to mention that, which I understood very clearly in this session was that about the relevance of the order of mind, false ego intelligence in mind. So why false ego comes first is that first we have to forget our identity to come here. And that's what false ego comes that if we don't forget, then we won't be able to see that, yes, we were here for our own enjoyment. And then the intelligence is given so that us, we can make arrangements accordingly. And then the mind and the senses are there which at the top which helps us what we wanted to like to do, like false enjoyment, so called enjoyment. So this, this order is made very relevant. So these are the few points which I wanted to share. Rest, other devotees have already shared the points. And
So it's already one thirty, I plan from twelve one thirty. So, I'm very thankful to all of you who came and joined us on this special session. Krishna willing, we have a special three sessions for next three days in the evening. That is what GBC has proposed, so we will try to do this. So please join us and thank you so much for your prayers from Maharaj and chanting from Maharaj. Very grateful to you. We will finish that session now. Namam Vishnu Padayay, Krishna Pishthaya, Bhutile. Shrimatay Bhakti Vaidantaswamy, Intigamne. Namastey Saraspatay, Dhanavani, Pacharane. Nirvishesh Ashunwadi, Paashcham, Padeesh, Taam. Jiggi Dini Shreepakka, Thakka, Vanjankal, Pukkum, Dechad, Vipasandugay, Vacha, Patita, Naam, Paavne, Veer. Hare Krishna.